Thank you, Jim. Good evening. My name is Kevin Cabral. I'm the president of the Concord Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, it is my honor to welcome the candidates and the audience to the Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum for District Two and Four. The chamber is proud to be celebrating 85 years in the community, and we are pleased to host this event to increase voter awareness and the upcoming November election. I would like to mention that this forum is being recorded, and it will be available on the chamber's YouTube channel after we upload it, so look for it tomorrow or the next day. Here's how the evening will go. Tim McGallion, chairman of the Board of Directors for the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce, will be asking the candidates a series of questions, alternating the order of responses for each question. These questions were submitted in advance by chamber members and the community. We will start each candidate having two minutes for the opening statement, then each candidate will have one minute to answer each question, followed by one minute of a closing statement. The order for each section has been randomly generated. Candidates, as you answer, a timer will start. The light will be green when you begin, turning yellow with 20 seconds left. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and there might be a little flash, too. Please stop your answer at that point. Now, I'll turn it over to Tim, who will moderate the remainder of the forum.
All right. Thank you so much, and everyone, thank you for joining us this evening. So we're going to go ahead and get started, and let's go ahead, and so if there are... Let's see here. So Kevin went ahead and went through the general ground rules of what we're going to do this evening, so I do want to just do some general introductions at this moment in time. So we have two candidates running for one seat in District Two. That is Carlin Obringer and Eric Antonick. And then we have four candidates running for one seat in District Four. We have Eddie Burson, Miles Burks, and Pablo Benavente. Not participating in this evening is Matthew Dashner. So let's go ahead and get started. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, and the order, just so you know, at this point is going to be relatively simple. We're just going to go down the dais. So we're going to start with opening statements from Carlin to start.
Should we be using the light?
And, yes, just for... Thank you. So in order to get your mic to work, there is a little green button. Go ahead and touch it when it's time to talk, and then hit it again so that it's muted. If you see the little red around the mic, you know it's live as well. Okay. Carlin, go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and I want to thank the chamber and the organizers for putting together this panel for us. My name is Carlin Obringer, and I am proud to serve the people of District Two on the Concord City Council. And thanks to the voters of District Two, I've had the chance to serve as the city's mayor once and as vice mayor twice. And so this means that I have the knowledge and expertise to get things done for the community, and I listen to the community. The community has told me, "Carlin, fix the roads." So we are spending $114 million to fix our arterials, and there's a lot of roadwork happening in District Two in many residential neighborhoods. I've heard the concern about public safety, especially about our kids, and so I've worked with my council colleagues to find funds for two school resource officers to serve Concord High Schools, and that's something that Mount Diablo Unified used to share with us, and the board refuses to do. I've heard concerns about the need for more affordable housing for seniors, for young people to stay in the community, for working people. And so we've got 1,000 units of new housing in the development pipeline, including 500 units affordable to people making $33,000 to $84,000 a year. Also, I am one of the council members who ensured that we have a master developer that the community trusts, working with us to redevelop the former Concord Naval Weapons Station. And so I'm here tonight to humbly ask the people of Concord to join with Concord police officers, firefighters, and hundreds of residents of District Two in supporting my reelection to the Concord City Council so I can continue to fight for what matters most to you. And I look forward to the discussion later this evening. You can learn more about what we've done together at www.carlinobringer.com. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carlin. Next up, we have Eric.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Eric Antonick. You can find more about my thoughts at ericantnick.com. I welcome your feedback. I'd like to start with two survey results from the Bay Area News Group that was performed within the last couple of weeks. One is that 70% of registered voters in the Bay Area say that their quality of life has declined over the last five years. Only 13% say it's improved. 17% say it's stayed the same. Same survey also showed that registered voters, 53% plan to move from the Bay Area within the next few years. We have a burning need for drastic change. We've had eight years of the same on the council with both incumbents. We need fresh ideas, fresh energy, fresh experiences, and practical solutions. We don't need more of the same. The incumbent is always going to say that things are fantastic, I've done a swell job, you need four more years, total of 12 years, total of 16 years. And I just don't think the compelling reason has been... A case has been made for that. We don't need 12 years of the same, the same leadership that has gotten us into these holes, and I'll go over lots of the crises and fiascos we've experienced. There used to be a saying in the '70s, early '70s, I believe, "If you're not angry, you're not paying attention." I think it was even a bumper sticker. If you're... I have a corollary to that. If you're a politician and you haven't shaken things up, if you haven't actually solved problems, you're part of the problem. The incumbent is very good at PR, very glossy, expensive, well-funded campaign, hard hat showing construction projects that they've used your money for, however, always twisting...
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, Eddie.
Hi, I'm Eddie Burson. I'm your mayor. Oops. I'm your mayor, and I still don't know how to use these things. So with that, this election is really about proven leadership and having the ability to lead the city and to recover from everything that is thrown at us, and whether it be issues on the roads where we have done $114, $120 million worth of work that started... The campaign started in 2018, when I was last mayor. Public safety is a top issue with me. We put police cameras on, we increase the technology so that they can reduce the amount of time at a scene and increase the capture of car thieves and others. We also support the replacement of our local police substations, and I want increased patrols in the neighborhoods. I was an outspoken leader for the homeless strategic plan, and while we worked for a year on it, we still, as a team, worked on the issue. We had a 28% reduction in our homeless, and we now have $5 million plus going into that strategic plan, which we, the council, worked on. And in fact, we're the only ones who have of these candidates that even approached or even attended the homeless strategic plan. I'm looking forward in the next two weeks to getting the results of our research on which way we're going to go. I was a leader on the council for a bunch of other issues, and we have now gotten to a point where we are looking forward, and I want to continue the success of what we have planned. We will learn...
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Miles.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you to the chamber for the opportunity today. I'm Miles Burks, and I'm running for Concord City Council to make a real change, to better the community, to make it whole, safe, and a great reputation, bring that back again. I would love to bring in more businesses, repeal the restrictive rent control that is going to put us in the direction and path that is going to end up looking like Oakland and Richmond. I refuse to let Concord go in that way. I love this town. I grew up here. I went to school here, and I will fight for Concord till my last breath. I work hard in a business. I own two restaurants, and I would like to bring my business skills to the table here at City Council. There's a lot of budget issues where there's no transparency. I want to be complete transparent and be a responsible steward of your tax-paying money to make sure that your dollar and your penny is going to work and where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Pablo.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and being here today, and thank you for the people who are listening here on the other side of the screen, and thank you for the Greater Chamber of Concord for hosting this forum. Let me introduce myself. My name is Pablo Benavente. I lived in Concord since I was age 13. I'm a very proud graduate of Pine Hollow Middle School, Clayton Valley High School, and SISU East Bay. I have a deep commitment to serving my community, and it's been proven on my record. I served on Monument Impact Board of Directors. Most recently, I am a commissioner for the Parks Recreation and Open Space. As well, I was the leader of Ballot Initiative Measure V as the co-chair, was one of the leaders, that helped bring $30 million annually to our city, and you heard some of the people speak about it today. And that's thanks to that effort, we've spent close to $120 million. If you are driving on Treet, if you're driving on Monument, if you are driving Oak Grove or Cowell, you're starting to see the repavement of our roads. Not only does it cover roads, but it covers public safety. It also covers our parks, recreation, and open space. There's been so much deferred maintenance on our parks that are so important for us. And as well, it helps with the homeless. $2.4 million from Measure V has come to aid with the homeless situation here in Concord. And I'm very proud to be here with you and earn your vote, and as well, I live here with my partner. My daughter chose to raise my daughter here. She's 18 months tomorrow. I'm very proud of that, and I want her to live, work, and thrive and retire here in Concord, the city that I grew up in. As well, if you want to find out more about my campaign, go to pablobenavente.com, and I look forward to representing you in a few days, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So we're going to go through a series of questions that have been prepared. So we're going to start. Our very first question is going to be, "Have you been involved in Concord's civic affairs? Do you regularly attend city council meetings or engage with local governance?" And so we are actually going to stick to the same order in this one, and then the next few will start getting random in terms of who's going to go next. So we're going to start with Carlin.
Thank you. So I love Concord, and I spend as much time in and with the community as I can, whether it's a dumpster day or a creek cleanup or a monthly trash cleanup. You are going to see me out in the neighborhood where people are. That is what I do. Now, to answer your question, yes, I've been involved with the Concord community really since 2009. So I was proud to serve on the Design Review Board. Then I was a planning commissioner from 2012 until I was elected at large to the council in 2016. But in between 2010, when I first ran for city council, and 2016, I sat in that back corner where my friend Elaine is at nearly every meeting to find out what was going on so that I could be up to speed. I've been involved... You know, if there's something happening in Concord, I want to be a part of it. I chaired the Concord Fourth of July Parade from 2016 until 2023. I was involved with the Chamber of Commerce Business and Education Committee and many other things. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Eric.
I've lived in District Two since 2009, so 15 years. Prior to that, I was in a different district within Concord. I raised three kids here, been very active in the community. All three of my kids went to Queen of All Saints from kindergarten first all the way through eighth, and then local high schools after that. Educated myself on many of the issues, spoke... Very active in terms of speaking with residents, so I've gotten a feel for the city and how things have passed over the years. As far as attending council meetings and reading the agenda, the time before last is about 224 pages, I believe. Good reading, I recommend it. But more recently, I've been, as I grew increasingly frustrated with the direction of the city, the crisis of homelessness, the naval weapons fiasco, I have been more outspoken. My pet issue was the Naval Weapons Project, starting since before COVID, catching Eddie here during a break.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, Eddie.
Well, let's see. Moved here in 1983, 40 years, raised my kids, my grandkids, and I just received a couple of months ago a certificate from the council for 15 years of perfect attendance at the council, and that's for three years before I got elected. Furthermore, the only reason it says 15 and not 20 is that I missed a day in May of, what, Something like that? I've been very active all through this community. You'll see me on all sorts of different boards. You'll see me at your dumpster days all over the city. I have basically never said no to anyone who has asked for help. I'm a Rotarian for many, many years. I've been active in the monument, and I have been just about everywhere in this city...
Thank you, Eddie.
...doing anything.
Miles.
Hi. I've lived here my whole life. I'm not that old, but how old do you have to be to mess up a city? I've... Our family put our business here to help the community and bring in a more viable space of gathering, and our business is like a watering hole, where you get to meet your neighbors and meet other local Concordians to help everyday problems and issues that we have. I am always here at council meetings as well. I was also an applicant for the homeless strategic plan. Even though I was not chosen, I did not let that stop me. I worked with Carlin Obringer before on feeding the homeless, doing a homeless outreach. I worked with other residents in Concord for feeding the police and paramedics when we were back in COVID-19, when it was, you know, scary times. And I love this city, and I'm happy to be a part of it and keep working for it even in the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. Pablo.
Yes, I've been active in my community. As I said during my introduction, I am serving as commissioner for the Parks and Recreation and Open Space for the seat of Concord, as well Measure V, which you heard me talk about earlier, and Monument Impact. And one of my proudest moments with Monument Impact is during COVID, we raised funds, $2.1 million, to help families here in Concord. Everybody was struggling during COVID. People were being laid off, but we raised this money with the board and, of course, the people, the staff at Monument Impact, to help families in need, whether it's rent, whether it's buying groceries, whether it's paying for their mortgage, or any day necessities. I took a 20% cut during COVID, and that's one of my proudest moments in being at Monument Impact, is being able to help the people who needed it during that time when a lot of people were being displaced. And it doesn't stop there. I am still going to continue to be involved in my community, hopefully earning your vote and being able to sit on this side with Measure V.
Thank you, Pablo.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So our next question is, "What specific experience or training do you have that equips you to make informed and effective decisions for the city of Concord?" We're going to start with Pablo.
Yes, I think through my life, my life experience, serving commissions, and as well, I work for the private sector, I work for the labor sector, I work for the nonprofit sector. I bring a unique perspective and as well, a new generation mindset to the city council, which I think will benefit our city. Our city, there's a mixture of younger folks, a mixture of retirees, a mixture of middle income, and, you know, we have to reflect, the city council has to reflect, the people of Concord. And I think I bring a very diverse background when it comes to working collaboratively with different stakeholders, and I look forward to bringing that experience into the city council.
Thank you, Pablo. Next, Carlin.
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned earlier, I've had the privilege of serving as your mayor once, as your vice mayor twice. I'm currently serving right now. I've served on a number of boards and commissions, including the Board of Monument Impact, and I was actually the chair of that board for several years, including whenever there was the transition to a new executive director. I serve on a number of regional bodies to work on economic development, the East Bay Economic Development Alliance, Transpac, which works to ensure that Concord gets its fair share of transportation funding so that we can fix our roads. Also, I think one of the most important ways that I've learned about what's important to the people of Concord is being with them. Whenever we do beautification projects, where we did tree planting up near Hillcrest Park in a median that had never been planted on Olivera Road, whenever I joined folks for dumpster days in the Sun Terrace and Holbrook and other neighborhoods, whenever I hear what people want and I answer their questions and they tell me what they need. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Eric.
I've lived all around the country, grew up around the country, lived eight years in Venezuela and Mexico. That helped shape some perspectives and experiences. I've worked in the telecom industry, the private sector, since 1999, and built cell sites primarily during that period, distributed antenna systems, huge multimillion-dollar projects where I was accountable for all aspects of it, from permitting, zoning, all the way through logistics and budget and closeouts. The Sir Francis Drake Hotel, numerous Veterans Administration hospitals throughout Northern California, Apple headquarters, big projects. Joint Poll Association, over 1,500 polls down in Southern California, small cell deployments. I know how to get things done. I know how to set new standards as to what can be achieved. I know how to work across functional groups and get things done. I don't just intend to spend people's money and say, "I've been a success because I'm spending even more of your money," and...
Thank you.
See, that's part of the problem.
Eddie.
I've been in corporate America, revolutionizing the maritime industry with containerization. And I've also done my own business for the last 38 years, based here in Concord, in the same industry. I have lived abroad. I've lived in Belgium. I've lived in England. I have traveled all over the world in the maritime industry, hitting about three-quarters of all the countries on the planet, although they keep making more countries which they've got to stop doing. I also would like to be able to point out that for the last 12 years, I've been on this council, and prior to that, I attended quite a few of the county meetings and participated in county commissions, as well as our Concord Community Alliance group. So there you go. I meant the Concord Neighborhood Alliance group.
Thank you.
So, there you go.
And Miles.
Hi. I believe I've been in business since 2018, and my first business in 2019 was a fail, but that didn't stop me from opening another business. And I know how to open the books and look at all the numbers on what's working and what's not, and listening to my staff and employees and customers of what they want and need and all their suggestions. I would love to bring my listening ears, because real issues need real solutions, and I want to work on that on point, just how I work on my business, how we do every day. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So this next question is going to come back to Miles to start. "What is your assessment of Concord's homeless strategic plan? Do you believe the current proposals are effectively addressing homelessness and setting the city on the right path to meaningful solutions?"
I believe it is not the right proposals. I feel like they are drinking the low-income housing Kool-Aid. I believe that we should work on real strategies that has been proven in other cities that have worked and really lowered the percentage of homelessness by 30%. They created this bridge program in San Diego that I would like to bring here, and it's all under one roof where they have transitional housing, drug rehabilitation, and mental health. These are all big things that we are facing today, and we need to get, as a group effort, as a community, we can't show compassion unless there's accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Eddie.
Well, it'd be good if you read the strategic plan, as we attended it for over a year to develop it. And one of the first things we are doing is creating a mobile navigation center, which all of the above is one of the top priorities of what we are going to propose. We're waiting for the nonprofits to come forward and fill in the blanks. Furthermore, I would have appreciated if you had attended the meetings for a year or any of you. I'm glad that you had some ideas. We sat for a year with experts and went over the strategic plan, and then we presented it, and right now, it's being worked on. We have $5.2 million, now down to five, that we are going to put to use. I'm very happy with the path that we're going. We have had 28% reduction without this influx, and I am looking for a further reduction, which we have every expectation to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Carlin.
Is it me or is it Eric?
Nope, Carlin.
Oh, okay, great. So what I would say is this, if somebody had the exact answer to solve this challenge, I think they would have won a Nobel Peace Prize by now. So what we are doing here in the city of Concord is, we have this key stakeholder-informed plan that we are trying to implement right now. And by key stakeholders, that includes people who were unsheltered. We deliberately sought them out to participate. We're also working on a strategy of prevention, so we're trying to keep people housed through this rent stabilization policies, as well as production. As I mentioned earlier, we've got over 500 units of deeply affordable housing in the pipeline. However, there are gaps, and we need the county to help us by getting care court implemented for those people who are suffering with mental illness and drug addiction, who are falling through the cracks, and we need to have a place to provide them with help and support.
Thank you. Next up, Pablo.
It is a step towards the right direction, but I want to remind people, this is a one-time fund, which $2.4 came out of Measure V. I think it is a regional issue, and we got to make sure that it's sustainable, we find more funding for this. And why I say regional is because we may be solving it right here in Concord, but as long as our partners, our surrounding cities, are not involved, we're still going to have this problem. So I do want to work with my colleagues in the city council and as well the county, Clayton, Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill, Martinez, to make sure that we address this as a regional issue, not just a Concord-centric issue, because there are people out there who are unhoused, and they are moving city to city, and they are Concordians, they are from Pleasant Hill, they are from Martinez. And if we solve it just in Concord, it's a never-ending loop, and we have to break that loop. And I wish I had more time to explain what my strategy is for that, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Pablo. Eric.
I agree with the regional approach. No, I don't think it's a comprehensive enough plan. Eight years, the incumbent has been in this position, overseeing this crisis of homelessness. She has not solved it. It has gotten worse under her reign. November 8, 2023, Patch article, where they do a year-to-year analysis of the number of homeless in each city of the Bay Area and county, said that, quote, "The number of homeless is believed to be much higher than was actually counted, and in Concord, the number of homeless rose from 160 people in 2020 to 241 in 2023." That's a 51% increase. They conveniently, both Eddie and Carlin, conveniently don't tell you that. They tell you only about some 28%. Who knows if that's the case? And, you know, the same thing. They have the same campaign literature, they're using the same 28% statistic, you're getting more of the same with them. I want to see a more compassionate, integrated, aggressive approach. We should not have anybody living on the streets, period. Every month that goes by is more indication, more manifestation of the failure of this council to deal with this issue. We need a triaged approach. We have quickly assessed people's capacity for independent thinking. Are their brains fried, frankly, from drugs? Are they mentally ill? Do they have family members? What is their situation? And triage it. We have to have at least temporary, immediate temporary solutions so they can have basic safety, clean themselves up, have some help getting labor jobs, whatever they're capable of doing. That initial assessment has to be done.
Thank you. Okay. Move to our next question, and Eric, you're going to start this question when we get to it here. "Do you believe the city of Concord allocates sufficient funding for infrastructure? What specific projects or areas should be prioritized to support long-term growth and economic development?"
That ties in a lot to the Naval Weapons Project, which a minute is nowhere close enough to address this sufficiently. However, I have a real problem with how the council rubber-stamp cost overruns. If you attend council meetings, you'll see them just not even batting eyelash at huge costs. However, I have a real problem with how the council rubber-stamp cost overruns. If you attend council meetings, you'll see them just not even batting eyelash at huge cost overruns. $126,000 cost overrun on, on the September 24 council meeting. They don't even ask any questions, no scrutiny whatsoever as to why these were justified. There was another one of 7,367, no questions whatsoever to the city engineer or the city manager. And I hope to have more time to discuss this because it's really the lack of oversight, proper oversight, financial oversight and safety oversight. I, I have lots of examples I would love to tell you, but our council do not spend our money thriftly. It's a travesty, and we can get so much better oversight of our finances.
I'll repeat the question, and then you'll be next, Pablo. Do you believe the city of Concord allocates sufficient funding for infrastructure? What specific projects or areas should be prioritized to support long-term growth and economic development?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. I, I do think with Measure V, we are making a lot of progress when it comes to our infrastructure, our roads. Serving on the Parks Recreation Open Space Commission, there's a lot of deferred maintenance, and I want to make sure that our parks are being taken care of. If you look at Concord Community Park, some of the tennis courts, you can't even play because the asphalt that is required is not up to par. So we got to make sure that we take care of those spaces. As well, we got to make sure, one of my key priorities is also bringing a new library. We have one of the oldest libraries and the smallest one compared, we're the biggest city, yet we have one of the most dated libraries here in Contra Costa County. And I want to work with many partners and with my community, our community, to make sure that we bring about a new library. It's not just a place you rent books, it's a place where community meets, it's a place where there's a lot of after-school programs. And so I want to make sure we bring that as well. And the Concord Naval Weapons Station, we got to make sure that this is a world-renowned development, and I look forward to working with the city council and partners.
Next, Miles.
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Sure. Do you believe the city of Concord allocates sufficient funding for infrastructure? What specific projects or areas should be prioritized to support long-term growth and economic development?
I believe it starts from the root problem of why businesses are not coming here. Crime is up, homelessness is still out on the streets, and people are not going to want to go out as much while they know there's cars getting broken into where you could go out to eat. I believe it needs to be allocated right to where we got it. It's all about location. And if we can't clean up our streets and our, make places the reputation of Concord great, then no businesses are going to want to come in here. There's plenty of infrastructure and space to have businesses here and grow, meaning it will create more job opportunities for everybody and more consumers and more life for Concord.
Thank you. Next, Carlin.
Thank you. So we are allocating what we have, and I want to thank the people of Concord for voting for Measure V, because thanks to the passage of Measure V, we have this surge in funding that our city manager wisely working with our city finance director borrowed against future sales tax revenues, the $114 million you've heard me mention, so we can do this surge in roadwork that you are seeing throughout the city. However, we are going to need more. And so that is something in order to maintain our roads and do every residential street that each and every one of you wants to have done. So we have to figure out how to be prudent, and that is what we are doing right now. But to answer your question, we do have other unfunded needs. And so that's part of what the council does, is we take a look each year at what we need to do for roadwork, what we need to do when it comes to parks, to capital improvements. And also, I go to DC and advocate for federal funds each year to try to plant trees, emergency operations center, et cetera.
Eddie.
You can never spend enough money on infrastructure. I'm in the transportation business, been in it almost 50 years. And believe me, you can fix roads from now until ever. And you know what? We're going to be doing that, and that's exactly what the plan is. Yes, we could spend more money, and yes, we need to spend more money. But right now, we have to see the results of 114 million plus others that we're going to put in. Then we will evaluate which way we go and where, because infrastructure has a lot of meanings. It has everything from sewers, it has everything from putting in our T-lines for communication, and this we will do. Now, as for economic development, we have 9,000 businesses in the city of Concord. 9,000 businesses. And we will have more. We will have a turnover, and we will continue to grow.
Okay. So Eddie, you're going to start this next question. So what is your position on the potential rezoning of areas in Concord to allow for high-density housing as part of the affirmatively furthering fair housing projects? How do you see this impacting the city's growth, housing market, and overall community?
The program that was announced and came out of Sacramento is probably the worst-written report that's ever come out of Sacramento. It is just infuriated people, and they deserve to be infuriated because it's horrible. But we have to come up with a plan. We have to come up with 20 acres, and we have to see where they can be. I believe that there are solutions other than what has been picked. We have the possibility of going into things such as the university lands, school lands, other areas. We have places like the K-Mark, former K-Mark, which could be a site. We right now, you all see that there's been a clearing at the Staples area, Treat and Clayton Road. These are also possibilities. I'm not a fan of high trans, high density. I come from New York, I know what a project looks like.
Next, Miles.
As I've been walking and talking to a lot of residents, they are very upset. They had no say, there was no questions asked, and they feel like it was just thrown right at them. A lot of voters, if it was a subject to be voted on, I believe it would have been voted against it. And maybe a group project to work on where is the right location that everyone could agree on that would work beneficial. Concord Naval Weapons Station, big land area, easy access, close to a freeway, close to BART, easy transportation, where it wouldn't be so high-density and traffic, where everybody doesn't like traffic. But to make it economically safe and great for the areas to be so, it's not so closed-net.
Thank you. Pablo.
We have to build 2.5 million homes by 2030. That, that's what came from Sacramento. And part of that, I, we have to rezone. I do agree with opening, it's running only targeting District 4 and 5. I think we need to consider other areas as well. We need 20 acres. There is Cal State East Bay, there's plenty of land out there. And I just want to emphasize, we need more community input. I've been walking around, a lot of people say, I wish I had a, more of a heads-up, at a minimum three weeks. I felt that this was rushed, and I, I support that. If people should have the availability to comment on their city and how it should be built and get community input, and I do agree with that. And I look forward to working with the community so that we can build more housing, because we have to strive to 2.5 million homes. And we got to meet our goals. And it costs money, so we're going to have to partner with a lot of partners here.
Thank you. Eric.
I like the approach that Pablo just said, where you have to approach this from, what do we need? How many do we need to build in order to make a difference? Not just, you know, rattle off numbers, we approved this many permits, we have this many in the pipeline. That's in a vacuum. We have to look at the end goal. What is it going to take? And then we have to work towards that diligently and quickly. I agree. Communities were broadsided with these, with the way the council handled this, pushing these, these plans into their communities. I saw a YouTube video of town hall that Councilwoman Nakamura had in her district, where the people were outraged at how they were broadsided, blindsided, I should say, with, with these plans. They did not want that. One woman was talking about how they, she and her husband had saved for years, they wanted to move to a safe part of Concord, safe part of Concord, to raise their daughter. And, and now this council comes with these plans. This is why, another reason why the way the council has handled the Naval Weapons Project has been a fiasco, because this could have been our solution. Eight years, it's been a fiasco.
Finally, Carlin.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to remind folks, we are doing this because the state told us to. So if you don't like it, you can vote for someone for Senate or someone for Assembly. They're all on the ballot here in Concord, who is aligned with your housing views. So just want to remind you about that. And I also want to share with people, so I've been living basically next to the aptly-named Terminal Shopping Center since 2008. Before I even got involved politically, that shopping center was rezoned for multifamily housing. It still is a shopping center. So I just want people to keep that in mind. We do have many underutilized shopping centers, like the Terminal Shopping Center, that would be great for a beautiful mixed-use project. But without the property owner's buy-in, we can make plans until the cows come home, and nothing is going to change. So I just want to provide that perspective to people. We're doing what the state is telling us, and I agree, though, we need to get better with our communication.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we're going to start with Carlin. What is your stance on the installation of license plate reader cameras throughout Concord? The potential use of red light cameras at high-traffic intersections and surveillance cameras in parks? How do you balance public safety with privacy concerns in these decisions?
Sure. Well, those are three different items, and I'll try to take them in a minute. So basically, I think we can all agree in this room. The people have lost their minds when it comes to driving, right? You have to wait a few seconds before you go on green, because somebody's flying through that what is now their red light. So our, the city council did ask for a white paper from staff about red light cameras. And the bottom line is, it would take more staff. So our traffic department is in support of it, of a pilot program. However, Contra Costa County, the courts do not have a system set up to process violations. So that's something that would have to change for us to implement this. It also takes more traffic officers to process all this. So I would rather have a traffic officer out there catching speeders and writing tickets. We used to have 12 before the Great Recession on duty at a time. Now we only have three. I am going to pledge to find money to add another traffic enforcement officer. Thank you.
Okay. Eric.
I'm very much opposed to the ubiquitous cameras we have all around. They're seemingly in almost every intersection throughout our town now. I mean, it's almost becoming like London where, where it's a surveillance state, and there weren't enough precautions, at least not communicated to the people about safeguards within the police department as to how they're supposed to be using it. There should be a panel involving residents of Concord, where every time that these cameras are accessed, somebody from the community is making sure that is part of that sort of circuit breaker, to make sure that it's, it's not being misused. There should be no backdoor access with other jurisdictions, federal, state, whatever. I'm for supporting technology used by police to solve crimes. However, with, as I say on my website, I have a special section just on this issue. With great power comes great responsibility. As we're using technology to improve certain things, we need to go the extra distance to make sure that we're imposing safeguards and involving the community.
Eddie.
Eight years ago, the license plate readers were brought forth before this council. And at that time, I opposed it along with my council members. And the reason was because of the concern of where the data would go. That was eight years ago. Data management has changed significantly. If you have any questions, talk to your phone. Now additionally, what we did when the license plate readers came in, as suggested, we did go over it, and we did go over that specific issue of the data. And we were satisfied 5-0 that this is going to work. In the meantime, they have worked phenomenally. We are recovering a stolen vehicle every week. Two weeks ago, we arrested in the same day two car thieves and recovered the cars. All right? So the license plate readers have worked very well. I support it. Got mixed feeling about the...
Thank you, Eddie. Miles.
Safety is very important, but to put cameras on lights for license plate readers and red lights is a great idea, but we got to go from the grassroots of the problem. We did a mini poll of, while we were walking around residents, on why do you think people are running red lights these days? They're saying nine times out of 10, the lights are taking too long and they're just impatient. If we could fix the light structure of, you know, making it more efficient, that could streamline less accidents and less speeding. The tell is, if you're doing the speed limit, you should hit every green. But there's so many lights, that's not doable. Safety is very key, so I would love to work with the police to strategize more efficient ways to make sure everyone on the roads, bicycles, pedestrians, and cars are all safe together.
Thank you. Pablo.
If you want more detailed answer to this, you should go to the Pioneer. I've answered this question there, too. I don't agree with the red light cameras. I do think I'd much rather hire a traffic officer. It's been proven that there are more rare collision accidents through red light cameras because you're stopping immediately because you don't want to get a ticket. So I don't think those are good resources of tax-paying dollars going towards a red light camera. I'd much rather hire a traffic officer, because I think that's more, better use of our tax-paying dollars. And so regarding the license readers, I think they're working. I don't oppose them. I think we should continue to use them, especially when it comes to recovery efforts. There's a lot of, still catalytic converters are being stolen. And so if we get a license plate number from that license that the person stole, then we can track them and see where they're going, and I do think we can recover those with our, the license plate readers.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. So this next question, we're going to start with Pablo, and this is going to be one of those that let's have some fun either spending money or cutting money. So we're going to start off with, if you had to cut a million dollars from the general budget, what would you cut? Pablo, go ahead.
Great question. Again, another question that's on the Pioneer, that is answered there. I do, if I had to cut money, I will look at what is working in the city. It's just like, like when I was on the Board of Monumental Impact, what do we need to cut in order to survive? If there, if there's a recession, we need to look at, we need to look, put everything on table, including salaries, departmental spending, see where are, what we can take a million dollars from. The current budget is $128 million, so it's not a lot of money to be taking out out of the general budget, but it's resources that will be taken out from parks, for example, that is already has deferred maintenance. And so we got to be careful who we cut from, but I'm, the timer is really weird, it says 52 seconds now. But I do agree that we should be careful how we cut and look at everything on the table.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to go with Carlin on this.
Sure. So I just want to put in context. So the city has a $133 million budget, so we always have to live within our means. And a million dollars is a lot of money to you and me, it's a lot of money to the city, so we have to be very prudent. But with that said, so we also have our role of maintaining a 30% reserve. And so I think I would need a little bit more context about, you know, is this, is this just a, is this a situation where we are short by a million dollars, and so we would borrow from the reserve in that situation? Or is this a more challenging situation like what we faced whenever we were in the middle of COVID? And then we really had to look at priorities. We had to determine if there were going to be positions that would be cut. And at that time, quite honestly, we looked at some of the administrative positions, like the Assistant City Manager, and we reduced costs by cutting the administrative positions.
Eric.
I think it'd be irresponsible for me to, at this point, not being inside the, the council, to weigh in on where we should pull a million dollars. I mean, that due diligence, making a fully informed decision, I'd have to talk to all the department heads, scrutinize everything, look at, talk to the rank and file, see where the inefficiencies are, see where the waste is, and that would be a fully informed decision. Looking at the budget, 57% of the budget is the police department, $77 million, according to the website. That's by far the largest amount. You'd want to look there for inefficiencies, creative solutions to not deprive us of public safety and yet improve the way they're, they're doing things. I'm going to take this opportunity to say something. Eddie and Carlin have made a big point that the fire department and police department have endorsed them. You know, this is without their doing their due diligence and making a fully informed decision of even talking to any of the candidates. We deserve more, we deserve better from our, our police and fire department management. Make a fully informed decision.
Thank you. Eddie.
The question was... The question was, where are we going to take a million dollars? Not what we think we might do. The question is, where are we going to get it? And that is, needs to be answered. Very simply, on my side, I would cut the consultants and the outsourcing. It may result in a increase in time for our response, but it would save the million dollars, keep our staff moving, and we can go forward. I concur with Carlin that we might be in a situation where we could pull it from the reserve. But that was not the question. The question is, where do you cut? And where I would cut is the outsourcing and the issue of consultants. We should make more use of what we have, and if necessary, combine operations with other cities to answer questions that are theoretical or are planning that can be operated on. And that's the way you do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Miles?
If we were to cut $1 million, first off, I would look at the books and figure out where's all the money going and where is it being lost? I would start off by making sure and checking council members and city managers on their pay raises and pay hikes that they have and pensions that my sole mayor over here has done. And I believe no one else has got one. I believe Carlin didn't get a pay raise, or Laura Nakamura, or Ms. Hoffmeister. And I believe that's where it comes in from the inner solution, like where is the money going into their pockets and not towards our city? Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're, of course, we're going to do the inverse of that. And so now all of you have an extra million dollars to spend. What's that special project? What's that special initiative? Where do you think it needs to go? So if you now have an extra $1 million to spend in the general budget, what would that look like? We're going to start with Miles.
To have an extra million dollars, I would love to spend it more on the community, to bring in more community events, to have more structure on camaraderie, to say, oh yeah, that's my neighbor, to have more events to where we could have more schools involved and showcasing their arts and their, like, public views and their structure. I would love to put in more money into schools and facilities of all type of needs of healthcare, mental care, all care, and to better Concord, to see what the voters want and what they need.
Thank you. All right. Eddie?
For the last 12 years, this has not been a unusual question. And this is why the council unanimously set down a proposal of what we do with one-time money, suddenly where we have a million dollars. And what it says, the policy which we have acted on year after year, is we take care of the following: facilities, roads, unfunded liabilities, emergency repairs, and that's where it goes. That's the first prior, those are the priorities. That is the policy. That is the law. I should point out that a million dollars comes less than $9 per resident. So it's, we've got to be, the way we can protect our city is by thoughtful use of one-time money, which is what you're talking about. And there we have it. Pensions, unfunded liabilities, roads, facilities, and emergency stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Carlin?
So Eddie is right. We do have that policy and we do follow that policy. However, that was not the question. So I would like to put a million dollars toward a few things. So as I mentioned earlier, we need more traffic officers. So adding another traffic officer, I'd like to see the return of a downtown patrol officer. Again, these positions were eliminated due to the Great Recession. The chief has told me, Carlin, my focus is on patrol. You need to get some more bodies for me to put folks, more folks into traffic enforcement or specialty like the downtown. So those would be my two top priorities, as well as more roadwork. And I think that would easily spend down a million dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Pablo?
You heard me saying in my opening speech, I, that could be used for seed money for our new library. We have one of the oldest libraries in Contra Costa. It's dated. I think we can use a new library here in Concord. And the perfect location could be in front of the police station. It's near public transportation. It's near all the districts, and it's within walking distance to downtown. I think it'll be a great addition to our community. And as well, if we needed to put, the unfunded liabilities currently sit at roughly $230 million. So, and that's the retirement. And so I would put $1 million towards that. I mean, we have to be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Eric?
I, everybody has their pet interests, pet projects. I would want to leverage this million dollars as much as possible. The main, one of the main deficiencies of the council and how they've been operating over the years that I've observed is they don't have a comprehensive enough view of how complex some of these initiatives are. We need to, to, I would spend the million dollars on really engaging the public, front-loading immense amounts of effort to gather data, feedback, demographic data, business data, and develop a compelling five-year and 10-year vision of what Concord's going to look like so all of our initiatives can dovetail towards that vision. We don't do that. We haven't do that. Our initiatives are disjointed and sometimes at odds with each other. So I would have, you know, okay, I don't have time for this, but I would front-load all of these design efforts by engaging the public in a transparent and informative way to develop our plan.
Thank you. All right. So this next question that we're going to ask, we're going to give you two minutes for. And we're going to go ahead and start with Eric on this. Do you believe the current rent control and tenant protection measures in Concord are harming housing availability and placing an unfair burden on landlords? What changes, if any, would you propose?
I think it's just one small aspect of the, of the issue. You know, between 3%, 5%, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference. I did like the eviction protection in, in the measure that was passed. But it's a much larger issue. It goes to our economic development. It goes to the naval weapons project and all that land out there, missed opportunity over eight years. Fine, it's been a fiasco. We've lost this opportunity where we could have solved, largely solved our homelessness issue, our affordability crisis, if we had, if we had, if the council had managed this right. But we are where we are right now. So again, a much greater effort to gather information, involve the public, all the different parties, business, different advocacy groups, and a much more intelligent path, I think, than what we've seen. We don't see, we don't see anything from the council right now that's going to make a difference. So we have to change course. And I don't see that sense of urgency or even that awareness from the council. All these issues, naval weapons, homelessness, affordability, housing affordability, infrastructure, our roads are atrocious, everything, there's no sense of urgency from this, from them. The only answer is, we need more money. I just heard that. We need more money. Measure V is not going to be enough. No, we need to look at the vast amounts we waste on procurement. When, when, when the, when the, at council meetings, when the, when the council members are rubber-stamping approving bids that are 40-plus percent above what the city engineer has estimated for a project, and they're not even asking any questions as to why, this just shows how negligent they are about being stewards of our money so we can do so much better.
Thank you. Next up will be Pablo. But I'll go ahead and repeat the question one more time. Do you believe the current rent control and tenant protection measures in Concord are harming housing availability and placing unfair burden on landlords? What changes, if any, would you propose?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. Well, I, I know some people are going to talk about repealing. I don't think repeal is a viable option. However, I do want to look at the data. There is supposed to be a database that is supposed to be implemented. I do believe that there could be potential loss to the ordinance, and we got to look at the data at the end of the day. In my opening statement, I did say, live, work, thrive, and retire. And particularly, I've been knocking on doors and I've been hearing a lot from the community about the single-family homes. And that could be a potential issue. And if we need to amend, but we need to look at the data, we need to look at that and see what it's, how is it affecting our community, especially those retirees who depend on this money? As well, over 62% of district four are homeowners. And so we got to make sure that our constituency is being represented in city council, that the decisions that are being made are adequately represented. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the data after this being implemented for over a year, see what changes, do we need to make it stronger? Do we need to make it, adjust some changes? So I'm really looking forward to those, that data in order to make informed decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Miles?
Walking around in the district, neighbors and homeowners, even renters, I'm a renter myself, we do not believe in rent control. We've looked at the history of data, 75 years of history done by MIT and Stanford, has proven that rent control does not work. There, there's not been a city where it has. And I believe with the restrictive rent control, the path of where we're going to go with that route, we're going to look like Oakland and Richmond and then San Francisco, and this is going to cause more problems. It's not going to invite any developers or investors that want to own a home here and then rent it out. They're going to want to stay away, and I feel like the city will decay. I want more life in Concord. I want more people to come to Concord. But with rent control, there's the stereotype of crime, looting, more drug finaglia all over the streets. I want to bite that in the butt and stop it right away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carlin?
So there has been a lot of discussion about this, particularly those who are renting multifamily units over the past eight years. And there has been community consensus about that group. As part of our conversations, though, you know, the landlords, whenever they came here and were advocating, they said, look, you know, the three-point, you know, the 3% or 60% of the CPI is too low, but I can work with you. I can do 5%. And so that was something that I did advocate for because in LA County, as well as the city of Los Angeles, who have a lot more experience with rent stabilization than the city of Concord, they actually upped their rent cap because it was too low, and they raised it to 4% and 5%. So I thought we could learn from others. In answer to your question, I think the jury is still out. I've been walking and knocking on doors for 15 weeks. District 2 is incredibly diverse in terms of who lives there and the type of housing stock. I've talked to renters, I've talked to property owners, I've talked to owners of apartments in other parts of District 2. And it's very interesting that many of the single-family renters, single-family home renters are not familiar with the protection. So I have been educating them about this. But I have often gotten a response where people laugh at me and they say, oh, I'm renting the house from my cousin or my grandmother or my friend. And I say, okay, well, these are the protections that are in place, just in case you need them. So I am continuing to do my research, and I also look forward to the data that's going to come to us in March of 2025. And the other thing I'm looking for, there's two homes that have been sold in my neighborhood very recently. And I heard from the single-family homeowners that they wouldn't ever be able to rent out their property again, they'd have to sell it. So I want to see, is it investors or single-family homeowners buying these homes?
Okay. And finally, Eddie?
One of the more interesting aspects of this is proven leadership. I started this whole rent discussion eight years ago. And in the last eight years, there's only two people on here who have addressed the council on this issue. Furthermore, you ought to have to read that we understand that it is a dynamic situation, which is why our council put in a yearly review of the financial data so that we can make the adjustments as necessary. Right now, it is too early to jump up and down and say the sky is falling. All right? The 75 years of research of places like New York and San Francisco and Los Angeles, I got news for you. We're in Concord. The rent control or rent stabilization laws are very different in all these areas. Remember that we're talking about in this area, all right, the rate cap applies to, to houses built before 1995. So this is very different than what exists elsewhere. We will adjust what is needed for Concord. We will engage and continue. And engagement is the key. We had several hundred people talking to this council about the issue. We were here till 1:30 in the morning. And that wasn't the first time. Like I said, we've been at this eight years. We've got it done, and we will adjust it as needed and as proven. And that's what leadership is all about. Speak up, show up, and vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this next question, we're going to, we're going to give you one minute for. And this is going to kind of come back to a little more of our business focus. And so we want to know, what does pro-business mean to you? What does that phrase mean to you? And how do, how do you help drive economic development specifically? What does that look like? And we're going to start with Eddie.
If you actually look at the definition of what pro-business is in a political dictionary, what it shows is a bias towards your incumbent businesses. I'm a small business guy. I believe pro-business means that we have to make sure that anyone who wants to come into the field can come into the field. I support a lot of the work that the chamber has been doing to expand their reach and their influence on the new businesses and getting businesses in Concord to work with other businesses in Concord. We have 9,000 businesses. I'm one of them. Been that way for 38 years. We need to be proactive in terms of not just securing the new businesses, but also preserving those that exist. And it's a hard balance because you have to support what you have, as well as the same time, you have to figure out, how am I going to welcome a new competitor?
Thank you, Eddie. Miles?
Yes. As a small business owner, I understand business. And I believe when the struggles that I had opening a business was permitting issues and the structure of just the permit center in general. I believe to be pro-business and to help businesses is the incentive of making it a streamlined system where there's a one-stop shop to get all your permits, all your fees, and everything you need to open a business done under one roof, under one window. Pro-businesses mean you want to keep the same businesses here, we want to give them acknowledgement, let them know we appreciate them. We want to have a business community day so we can showcase our businesses that help Concord thrive. So that's all I'm for.
Okay, thank you. Next, Pablo?
Yes. Do you mind repeating the question before you start the timer?
So if you don't mind, go ahead and tell us what you feel pro-business is, and how does that help you drive also economic development?
Yes. So I think pro-business is being able to help businesses come to Concord. There is, in my opinion, for example, right now, I've been, I met with the chamber, and one of their priorities is make sure that street vendors, for example, if you have a taco, a taqueria, there's no taco stand right in front of you because that's direct competition. So we got to make sure that, you know, at least we set some parameters of where the street vendors can be, as well as making sure that businesses come backs to, come back to Concord. There's a lot of empty spaces here in Concord, and I want to make sure there are businesses thriving here in Concord. Because I think about expanding the tax base, and how do we do that? By having people coming to Concord and spending their money here and making sure that we have businesses in those empty spaces. And that's how you expand the tax base, because they're spending in Concord. And that, the sales tax is the biggest revenue maker for the city of Concord, and I want to make sure we continue to expand and, and help our small business and as well fill those empty lots or spaces.
Thank you. Next, Eric?
I agree with a couple points that Pablo and, and Miles made about reducing regulations, permits. Building homes is atrocious in terms, in the area, in terms of getting, going, getting through the permitting phases. Also bringing back and being very hospitable to, to businesses. The naval weapons project would be a fantastic opportunity for local businesses, but I, sorry, I lost my train of thought. sorry, I lost my train of thought. So being hospitable to local businesses or bringing in new businesses, I'm sorry, I'll have to get back to this once I can collect my thoughts and I'll insert this into the next question.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Carlin.
Thank you. So being pro-business means that you understand that small businesses are the lifeblood of the community and you're putting your money where your mouth is. So it means you're showing up, you're there, as I am at nearly every Tolo Santos Business Association meeting and Chamber First Friday Coffee, so that I'm there to hear directly from businesses as to what their concerns are, like the vending issue that was raised, and so that folks have my cell phone number if they have a permitting issue. I've been in contact with Miles about the Concord Tap House and the patio numerous times, trying to address that, as well as the street vending we've got going on down by the Old Spaghetti Factory. It also means you work with other communities to surface talent. And so I'm proud to be a co-founder of the Diablo Valley Tech Initiative in partnership with our surrounding communities, as well as DVC, because we're trying to help surface the tech businesses here so they don't have to work elsewhere, the tech talent. It also means creating a small business program during the pandemic. Thank you.
Okay. So this next question is, we're going to go ahead and touch on the city's budget specifically. And we're going to go ahead and start with Pablo. So what do you think is going to be some of the largest issues facing the city of Concord's budget in the coming year?
Well, definitely the unfunded liabilities. That is something, it's a retirement system. Right now, we have, like I said earlier, 200, almost $230 million in unfunded liabilities. And that is going to be a challenge that we need to make sure that we can continue to look at, as well as infrastructure. Measure B is helping, but I do think we can do more to our infrastructure to make sure that is funded. And we got to make sure that our infrastructure needs are currently being taken care of. Calpers is our retirement system and the city of Concord retirement system. So we are make sure costs are only going up and we're being handcuffed by calpers because they decide how much we need to give in. And so I want to make sure that we continue to be fiscal responsible. Although the budget is stable, we are in a good standing and we are trying to achieve 90% funded, but that's going to take some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Carlin.
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate that as long as I've been on the council, we have always balanced the budget regardless of COVID or whatever else was going on. However, we do have challenges. It was mentioned earlier that 57% of our budget is spent on public safety. Well, guess what? We still have the same number of police officers per capita as we had in the early 90s. And our city has grown significantly. So we're going to need to find a way to enhance our public safety department. We have stabilized it, but more is needed, as we've talked about earlier. We do have our unfunded liabilities that we work hard to pay down, our multiple pension systems. We do also need to take a look at how are we going to meet all of those unfunded infrastructure needs? And I just want to remind people, the city next door has the same budget and half the people. So we have to be very frugal in meeting all of the challenges that are facing us ahead.
Thank you. Next up, Eric.
Yeah, Measure V did bring in 30-plus million dollars of revenue each year. Unfortunately, expenses went up commensurate to that after the first year it was enacted. Like I've said before, our procurement system is, from what I've observed, not, the oversight isn't there as much as it should be. Again, rubber stamping these proposals, change orders, not even asking simple questions about the reasons for $126,000 here, $67,000 there. We can do so much better there. We need to make sure that we're lowering our expenses, being smart about it so that we can pay off the unfunded liabilities. Oh, and as far as small businesses, what I wanted to say last time, we need to be welcoming, we need to reduce permitting, we need to make, we need to bend to help out our business community, but we cannot compromise on our values while we're doing that. So we have to be clear about our vision.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we have Eddie.
Okay, you want to go first?
I'll go ahead.
All right, just trying to be, you know.
Either one, if you want.
Transparent. Budget, we've been doing this for 12 years, for quite some time. In fact, we've got someone who's here who's been doing it 28 years. We've always come up with the answers. We will meet whatever challenge there is. According to our own projections, we've got the next two years pretty solid. We suspect that after eight years, we will reach the peak of the issue with calpers and the pensions, and they will start to decrease. What can happen in between? I mean, we saw in one year, calpers unfunded, we were up to 71% and then we get a memo and we're down to 61%. It's always going to be a challenge with them. Our priority is financially is to make sure we stay above water. We are very conscious of what we are doing and we have met every single challenge.
Thank you, Eddie. Miles?
I'm not an expert in the budget, but I would rely on experts that the city do use on the budget to figure out infrastructure needs and the liabilities they're talking about of the things that are unfunded. And all the deferred maintenance that makes our parks would be great, but now they're not looking as good. Like Pablo said earlier about the tennis courts and even like just the play structures, they're falling apart here. I believe we need to be prepared for rainy days, just to have that prepared and experience to make sure when stuff hits the wall, we're ready for it and we will help our people, the city of Concord.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so that concludes our questions at this time. We're going to go ahead and do a closing statement and we're going to give each one of you two minutes for a closing statement. The order, we'll go ahead and start with Pablo here in just a moment. But again, we want to thank you so much for taking this time to go through this with us. And did you have a?
Yeah, they have extensive answers to a number of questions.
So really quickly.
I might, really? You turned my microphone on? Oh, dear. If you want to hear more from each candidate, the pioneer sent all of the candidates very extensive questionnaires and they answered them thoughtfully and completely. So some of them were like 2,000 words, 2,500 words. So if you, if you want to know more about where they stand and, excuse me, and what their issues are, go to pioneerpublishers.com and you'll see at the top, the elected, the candidate's election 24, and each of the candidate's statements are on the website.
Okay.
She had a question, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Tamara. Appreciate that.
I just asked a question about this ghost candidate, Matthew Dashner, why he's the most on the ballot. Did the answer the pioneer?
Roger.
So. So we're going to go, hold on just a moment, please. So we will go ahead and at the end, when we do conclude, if that's something you'd like to go ahead and meet and talk later, we can. But for the recorded portion of this, that is something that we're not going to address at this moment. Okay, because he decided not to have, be able to participate at this moment, so. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and go into closing statements. And like I said, we're going to go and start with Pablo and you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Well, I want to say thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you for everyone who's listening on the other side of the screen. I hope I can earn your vote now, between now and November 5th. I want to make sure that we continue to improve our infrastructure. As I mentioned, Measure V was critical and I'm not even elected and I was able to help our city tremendously already when it comes to homeless, the parks recreation, and open space, our infrastructure, our roads, and our public safety. Imagine the things that we can do together once I'm elected into city council by earning your vote. I also want to continue to support our local economy, making sure that we support the small business here in Concord and it continue to thrive here in Concord. I also want to make sure that we bring a new library. We have a lot of ground to cover once I'm elected. And as well, I want to enhance our public safety, making sure that we have more traffic officers instead of red light cameras. I want to make sure that we continue to take care of our parks, recreation, open space as well, that there's no deferred maintenance, that we continue to make sure that we take care of our tennis courts, that we have more pickleball and they're well-lit areas and as well help our unhoused population here in Concord. And we can only do this by electing me and I hope to earn your support. Make sure to visit pablovenavente.com. I'm also reachable via phone, 925-338-1473. And I've been endorsed by the firefighters, the Democratic Party. I'm the sole endorsed candidate by the Democratic Party, as well as Supervisor Ken Carlson and many local leaders here in Contra Costa and many of you who are here. So I hope to earn your support and remember to vote Pablo Venavente. We can do this together with your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pablo. Next up, Miles.
Thank you to the chamber and thank you for everyone being here. I'm not a career politician. I want to be a great representative for my district, for the people who have real issues and so we could solve real problems. I want to bring in real solutions and work with the regular, with the other candidates and other colleagues up here for attacking the homeless problem that is always growing. We need to get on top of that. I want to make sure Concord's safety is also a priority, to make sure that we have the resources with the cops to strategize efficient ways and new ideas to bring into the city so we could all strive and be together. I have more info on me at www.votemiles.com. And if you vote for me, Miles Burks, I promise you, I'll go the extra miles for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. Eddie?
Again, this election is about leadership. And what you have heard tonight is very interesting, except it has been silence for eight years in the past. And in that time, the voice that has gotten things done is mine and my colleagues on the council. We have tackled straight up all the issues straight on. We've gone through the meetings, we've gone through door-to-door, and we've done it in advance and with people. This is what it's done. This is how we rule. This is how we make our democracy work. We do not make it work by silence and then coming up in an election era with all these various things that would have been nice to have heard. And actually, we did hear from others. You want leadership, you want someone to be up there when we go through a COVID, when we go through a massive situation at the base, like when we had the Trump administration trying to take it over. All these issues take leadership. I've been transparent, I have over 100 videos on YouTube, I've gotten, I meet my, I meet all my city meetings at Pete's Coffee in the open, and there's no one I have ever said no to who asks for help. This is leadership. We've got a lot of things going forward and we're doing a great job here in this city. We are proud of this city and I want to continue the efforts that we've done and I want to continue to be a role model for those who want to be engaged and learn that government is either listening to you or someone else. And part of that is, you have to talk. So please, come up, vote, and let's continue making this city better. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Quiet, please. Eric, go ahead.
EricAntonik.com. I welcome you to go there, as well as to read the Pioneer article. That might have been mine, the 2,500 words. Eddie and Carlin have exactly the same brochure, the same format, same claims, 28% drop in homelessness, two pieces of, two pieces in a pod. It's the same thing, you're getting more of the same. Eight years, 12 years, once 12 years, once 16 years. Shouldn't we inject some new ideas and enthusiasm and techniques for bringing people together? I hope you do choose either Pablo or Miles over in District Four. I hope you choose me. You're not going to see my signs everywhere, Carlin's very well-funded. All the fiascos we've had, homelessness is a disaster, people have been suffering under her watch. I've talked to these homeless, women having to team up with a man just for safety, having to make arrangements with a man to protect her. We know what that arrangement is. She's beseeching me, she's almost distraught as she's talking to me. We could have solved this, we need people helped. We failed on the naval weapons project tremendously, time after time after time, a conveyor belt of master developers because this was poorly managed from the beginning. They did not do their due diligence during the design phase, the vetting phases. We, the people of Concord, and please, go to my website, I've got more on this, we need to own the naval weapons project. They are so intent on giving ownership to one multinational hedge fund after another. Now it's Brookfield, Saudi and Qatari largely owned a company out of New York City. Why are we giving ownership to them instead of we, the residents of Concord owning this? We'll have stock, as the loans get paid off, we'll become more and more invested, similar to the Alaska Petroleum dividend. Infrastructure, the budget, lack of oversight. Sorry, I'm out of time. Fiasco after fiasco, let's get a change.
Thank you, Eric.
They don't deserve four more years.
Okay. And finally, Carlin, go ahead.
Thank you. I do just want to clarify that the flyer that keeps getting displayed, it's an independent expenditure. I had nothing to do with it, someone else put it together. On that note, I'd like to thank the chamber, the moderator, as well as the public for joining us tonight. And I appreciate the 200 people who have voluntarily displayed lawn signs in their yard. So again, no one is getting paid to do that. I very much appreciate the community support in District Two. And I'm running for reelection and hope that you will consider supporting me because I have a proven track record of getting things done and I love helping people find government solutions to their challenges and finding out how government can work for them. Not every challenge has a government solution, but when it does, I try to help people find that. And I have a proven track record of listening to people. That's why we're improving our roads over District Two. We've done a lot of roadwork, the Northwood neighborhood, the Holbrook neighborhood, the neighborhoods around Mount Diablo High School, the hospital, Queen of All Saints School, Coventry, the Alameda, there's not a neighborhood in District Two, even the estates in Hillcrest that we haven't touched. And more roadwork is on the way because the community has said that they want it and they deserve it. Public safety, that is a top priority and is the safety of our kids. And so that's why we are paying for school resource officers and we've stabilized our budget so that we don't lose police officers to other communities. The Naval Weapons Station is very important, we have to get it right. And so we are finally back on track with a master developer that the Navy can work with and the community trusts. And also affordable housing, getting 500 units in the pipeline affordable to people making $33,000 to $84,000 a year. So I humbly ask for your support as I run for reelection so I can continue to fight for what matters to you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. And with that, we're going to wrap it up with Kevin.
Thank you to all the candidates for participating and to everyone who joined us tonight. I hope you leave this evening with a little more insight to help guide your decision in the upcoming election. This forum was recorded, don't forget, and will be available on the chamber's YouTube channel once uploaded. If you have any questions regarding the Chamber of Commerce, please feel free to reach out to us. And again, thank you, everybody, for participating and we appreciate it.
All right. With that, good night, thank you.